And I can't hear you all in the room. It's your intending for us to be able to hear.
Well, we were trying to keep secrets from you.
I know. We were talking about you.
I know. I know. You're making up some rumors now.
Well, there up until two seconds ago, when you and Ben. Didn't have enough people, so.
Okay, welcome everybody to the Ogden City Council and Redevelopment Agency work session, 4:00 PM work session. We have here in attendance, all council members with the exception of Luis Lopez, who I think may be joining us later. And we are joined online by Chair Chaburka and Councilmember Nadolski. Would you like to say hello?
Thanks, guys.
Hello. Thanks, Ken, so much for running the meeting.
You're welcome. All right. So we'll go ahead and begin with the agenda review for the first off, the 4:30 PM redevelopment agency meeting. We have approval of minutes. Everyone hopefully has had a chance to review those. If we are missing Board Member Lopez, which we are not, he's coming in right as we speak. All right. And we can review those and then we'll move to a closed session. Till in that meeting. I guess any questions or comments on that sec- that meeting? And then we will move into our 6:00 PM Special City Council meeting. And after the opening ceremony, we've got approval of minutes as well. And then we'll move into our unfinished business, the proposal and text amendment use and development standards in the M1 and M2 zones. Any questions or discussion prior to the 6:00 PM meeting on that?
Um, and Vice Chair, I'm curious, I don't really know the direction that we're going on that amendment. I mean, do we have a sense at all of what we're planning to do?
No, doesn't look maybe not. So Glenn, I don't know if you want to take a second. You did send an email out to the council about sort of the roadmap and kind of what our options are. Would you just review that real quickly?
Sure. Yeah, happy to do that. So everything that I had walked you all through last week, most of that is the same. You don't have to worry about substituting the ordinances. So we did get those split. So there are the three different ordinances on the agenda. Each of them are numbered separately, so you can take actions on each of those. Within that first one, that 2023-55, that still is what we talked about last week as ordinance one. So that still has the junk and salvage and the personal storage and the athletic facilities in that one ordinance. So if you all want to remove those sections, you would have to make the motion to remove those. So in the roadmap document that Barton put together, all of that still applies to that 2023-55 ordinance, that ordinance one, as it's referred to in that document. And like I said in the email, there's a lot, you know, if you want to get rid of the junk and salvage, you know, that document shows, you know, you make a motion to remove section two and this line item and all that. We've got all that pretty well documented. If you want to take that out, just make a motion to take out everything related to junk and salvage. I think we've got a pretty good record on that. So that'll hopefully simplify that if you guys want to make those kind of motions. Other than that, yeah, so you would, you would make the motion to amend that ordinance. It would be a motion second, just a voice vote on that to amend the ordinance. And then once all the amendments are made, then it would be a roll call vote to adopt an amended ordinance. Unless of course, none of that passes and you don't want to pass any of it, then you can vote to not adopt that ordinance.
Could I make a kind request?
Yes, sir.
Could I get a hard copy print of Barton's?
Yes, and I do have, I do have some of those. So Councilmember Nadolski requested that also. So his is on the dais in chambers, but I've got some other ones right here. So if anybody else wants one, I've got a handful of them.
Be nice to kind of scratch things out and make notes in there. Okay, thank you.
Chair Chaburka, does that answer your question or at least help?
Oh, it definitely helps. I mean, I mean personally, right now, I'm, I'm still very conflicted about passing the overall ordinances for all of these items across the board for the whole M1, M2. But I just, I need to think about that a little bit more. So I think I'll let others take the lead and then I'll just vote my conscience on that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think I kind of feel the same. And I do think that that's maybe a general sentiment is the overall. It's just a question of what parts we all feel good about. As we go forward. So following the unfinished business, oh, sorry, Councilmember White?
So maybe this, I'll ask the question if I, maybe it's on here. Let me look at the question.
Okay. So we'll take public comments after that and then comments from administration and council. And then we also are looking to consider a journey into a closed session in the Special City Council meeting. And I think we adjourn from there. I go to the last page in my packet here. Okay. First item on our work session is the redevelopment agency board business and board comments.
Janine, would it help to have discussions about the M1 and 2, or do you want to just move on to Glenn has some CIP information?
So I do have a question about the recycling collection centers. We don't have that in.
So that, that wasn't on that roadmap document. You could certainly make a motion to change that or to not make that change.
Okay.
But yeah, that wasn't one of the ones that the council had talked about possibly removing. So that one wasn't included on there, but you can always take that out. And that is in, in ordinance one. And just a note, because there are a lot of changes, I do have hard copies of the ordinances and the spreadsheet also, if people are looking for those as well. So it would be in section two of the ordinance on in the table, in the use table. Were you thinking about making a change or just asking where that was? Maybe I should ask that first.
Well, I mean, I was just trying to see, I mean, it's not on, it's not on, on the roadmap thing right here.
Right.
I can look at that Glenn. I'll pull that up. And then is it entertainment and fitness or is it entertainment comma fitness?
Are you looking on the roadmap document?
No, I'm looking.
Or on the actual ordinance itself? So the use is let's see. So the way it reads in the ordinance in the use table, it's the indoor-outdoor recreation business, which provides activities for patrons of all ages by means of education, training, meditation and physical and spiritual wellness. Examples include, and this is, this is some new language, gymnasiums, health club, dance studio, and then back to what was in there before martial arts and related training businesses. And then on that use table in the M1 and M2 zones, that is changed from a permitted use to a not permitted use. So that's the third change on that roadmap document.
Thank you.
And then back to the recycling collection center. So it's still in the use table. And that also in the M1 and M2 for the recycling collection center changes from a permitted use with conditions to not permitted. So they would be, the ones that we have now would be permitted to continue as non-conforming uses, but no new ones, obviously.
Okay. I guess, yeah, any, any further discussion on how we maybe proceed with that? With all those options?
I, I've been kind of thinking about this and it, because of the way the ordinance is written and, you know, the information that has been kind of refined for us is good. But I'm kind of wondering if, you know, these individual uses, if we could kind of say, okay, for instance, it's amounted up into three ordinances to make it easy, but there's still multiple things in each ordinance that may want to be tweaked a little. And so if, if, while it's being presented to us, it would, it would maybe be nice if, if each of those individual items was kind of specified. I'm trying to think of something in there that, that you know, for instance, but nothing's coming to mind. But you know, I, I, I would, I could foresee that nothing is even going to be passed in its current state anyway. We might tweak it even further. So that's, that's kind of what I'm wondering, you know?
Yeah, I don't see Barton here, so we can pass that note on to him or you can request that he get into a little bit more detail in the meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
What about the design standards? It felt like everybody was okay with those. Okay. I think at a minimum, you know, that will at least help going forward. Remember that we don't have another week. This is the, this is the day.
Yeah, I feel good about the design standards. I think there's some, some progress there. That would be good, so. Okay, so shall we talk about the CIP? Glenn? Come on up here. Yeah, or come on up there. Yeah. Yeah, it's dinner time.
So hopefully all of you had a chance to email I sent out yesterday. Yes, please. So based on what we talked about when we reviewed the CIP with the budget, it seemed kind of tricky to try to rank projects as we were reviewing those with the budget. And so the idea was put out there that rather than the current year, the council would vote on future projects. So with that in mind, what I did was I took all the projects, you can kind of see on this, on this spreadsheet, and I included those in the, in the email. I took all the projects and broke them into the one-time projects and the ongoing projects. And then took out all the projects that were fully funded with the FY24 budget. So these that you can see here, these are the, the one-time projects that were either partially funded or not funded at all with the FY24 budget. And credit to Brandon and Eric for putting this together. I kind of had a rough concept of, of what I wanted to have done. And they knocked it out of the park as far as putting the survey option together. So on this, what we decided to do was break it out with the one-time projects and do just a priority level rather than a one through 25 ranking. Because sometimes that can be difficult. So you'll see, just from the top of the page, there's a link to the full book. So that's everything. If you want to really get into the details, you can do that. This spreadsheet, you can click on that and that'll give you a bigger version of that. So you can see some of that additional information. And then for each one of the projects, there's a link to the individual project brief, if you want some more information just on that one. So if you go through, start at the top, put your name in there and then go through your, your priorities for each of the projects from low priority to high priority. So five different categories there. Just go through each of those and then click next. And then for the ongoing projects, since there's, there's funding pretty much every year for these, these are, you know, like I said, recreation, street sidewalks, you know, parks, things like that. So there's, there's almost always some level of funding with these as ongoing projects. And so on this one, I added a little bit more information. So this one also has, you know, total project cost, what was in the, the 24 CIP plan, what was funded in FY24 and then, and what's remaining based on the project information in the, in the capital improvement plan itself. So with these, like I mentioned, because there's, there's usually always a little bit of funding or ongoing funding. I didn't do the five categories, but we just did three with this. So this is just a survey, whether you'd like to see less funding, the same amount of funding or more funding for these ongoing projects. So again, a link to the whole book, that spreadsheet with additional information, you can click on that. And then each of those projects has the project brief associated with it. Then you get through those and submit and that's all she wrote. So hopefully you all get a chance to do this. I heard from Lisa and Justin, they're, they're working with administrative staff right now to start to put preliminary budget numbers together and CIPs together. So if we can get this done in the next few days, maybe the next week, we can get that information to them and, and you all can have your voice heard as far as what projects you want to have funded and how.
Love this. Awesome.
Yeah, this is awesome.
Can you maybe put a calendar invite into our calendars to say, do this now?
I can.
It just might help us remember to do it. I mean, I'll try to remember.
Set like reminders like every 15 minutes.
No, maybe one.
Yeah, no, we can. Yeah, no, that's a, that's a great idea. We can certainly do that. We can, we can do maybe the end of the week, have a calendar appointment that says, you know, council members, please have this done by, by this date, put that on the council calendar and then put the link in here. So I sent the link out with the email, but obviously we don't want that super public because, you know, it's for you guys to do this ranking. So we can put that link in that calendar also.
I really do like this approach rather than one to 25 thing. This, this really, I think where you've got a group of people making this kind of a score. It's going to be maybe more applicable. It was really hard for me to wrap my mind around it because everything was high priority to me. I'd look at it. And so this will, this will help a lot. I really appreciate this approach. I think it's, that's a lot better.
Okay, awesome. And thanks to these guys for putting that together. That was a really good job. Jot form. So, and that's one that we had already, a survey, just, I'm not sure which program it came with. It was with our website or something else. Yeah, okay. But we had it already and they were able to put that together.
So just to be, just as a, to be clear, you're, you're hoping to have this survey answered by end of the week?
I think end of the week would be helpful.
I just wanted to make, yeah.
Yeah, usually we kind of live on a Tuesday to Tuesday.
Yeah.
Schedule, but maybe by the end of the week would be most helpful.
Okay. So perfect.
So I'll put that in there.
Good.
Any questions, concerns, issues? And obviously you can give me a call or text or email or whatever, if you have any questions on anything.
Thanks so much, Glenn. And I really love the idea that Marsha had of the calendar invite.
It's a good idea.
7:00 AM on Saturday for Councilmember Hire.
That's right.
Alrighty.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any city council business or comments we need to address at this point?
I don't have anything, so.
I was just going to say, thanks for sending out some ideas for us. And I just, I would like to have a work session or a strategic session at some point in time. It sounds like it's later rather than earlier, but I think it'd be great for all of us to be able to weigh in on some of the things that are going on.
Right, I agree. Okay. So we all have 10 minutes to fill out the survey now before we move to our closed session. Or do we want to, are we okay to, or do we need to wait till 4:30? We do have to wait till 4:30. Okay. I, I see Mara is here. I don't know if she would like to do any updates on anything that we've been talking about. There's anything out there? Anybody have questions? She was, yeah, hate to. Okay. I think there was, there's been some discussion about the building on 25th Street. I think that's obviously top of mind for, for most of us here. And maybe an update on that would be great if you, if that's okay to ask that.
Yeah, maybe also with that is the process by which, if there's anything going on, meaning sorry, looking at this. Everybody's looking at this. A couple of things. I was, I did get an update. I can start with the Jack in the Box one.
The Jack in the Box, yeah.
On that one, but we, we did, they still are incurring penalties for one storage unit that's still on the property. But otherwise, they have closed off the Harrison access per UDOT. And they are using the circulation pattern that had been approved. So it seems like on that part of it, it's, it's getting, they're conforming more with what we anticipated. So we're continuing to keep an eye on that, but that seems to be moving in the right direction. And on the 144 25th Street, we, they, they have until October 16th now to submit some revised plans. So we're still working with them on that. And so that we're, we're just, we're waiting a little bit. We're in communication with them. And we're seeing what, what we get back as far as the current issue. And we're also keeping an eye on the, the building security actively working on that. But they, they do have personnel there. So there's live monitoring of that structure right now. Can you give us an update on how that process happened, not happened necessarily, but how we caught it? Did, did we cut it and catch it in the normal review or?
There are, well, it's, it's hard to say. We, you know, I don't, I don't know exactly when we, we, we caught it in a visual inspection that with respect to the way the, the framing had been treated for fire purposes. So that was, was caught in a visual, visual inspection.
By our fire marshal.
By, yeah, by, by the fire marshal and by our code, by our building official. So that, that was how we determined that.
And it's been brought up that there might be other properties this builder developer is, is doing now. Are we inspecting that building as well?
Yeah, so they are in developing a property on 12th Street, which had been under a stop work order and is now proceeding because they, they cleared the issues that had been a concern to the building official on that structure. So that, that is moving forward. And I, I don't have specific information, but I know that there would be, if there's anything that required routine inspections, we'd be doing a visual in-person inspection as that construction proceeded. So I can get some exact information on where that, that is at. But as far as I know, you know, it's, it's been, it's moving forward as, as normal.
Is it a free for all question? Because I have some more.
Yep, some other questions. I know Councilmember Nadolski has a question.
Thanks, Ken. Mayor, I was made aware over the weekend of a contract for services that we have with Mark Johnson for consulting services. The Utah's right to know website lists the salary at 211,000. I don't know.
Yeah.
Doubt that's the contract, but I don't, I didn't know, I wasn't aware of the contract and was wondering if you could tell us the nature of the contract and the amount of work to be done.
Sure. Just to clarify, we don't have a contract with Mark Johnson, but he is, he is still on our, our payroll as a part-time employee, which is, which is common. He doesn't have a, a re-employment restriction because he was not in the, you know, Utah retirement system. So it, it's common that you have somebody who retires with a lot of knowledge and experience to be, to give some consulting or, or be asked questions from time to time. So that, that's the situation with Mark Johnson. He is being paid at a rate, an hourly rate, that's equivalent to his salary when he was employed here. And we, in the last two pay periods, I know on one pay period, he worked about like 14.7 hours and then seven hours in the second pay period. So he's, I don't have that right in front of me, but received a pay in the amount of at a hundred dollars an hour, like 20, $2,400 or something like that over the course of the last two pay periods since, since he hasn't been a full-time employer of the city. So just this routine questions, consulting, and that's, as I said, not uncommon when you have somebody that's worked here for a long time. But there was some misinformation out there, I think. Not sure where that, where that, how that got out there, but that's not the case as far as continued unemployment or any contract with the city.
Well, I think the way it's listed on the website, maybe it's lends itself to the understanding that, that there is a contract. But how long is this arrangement intended to last?
I, I think probably just until he's not needed anymore. As I said, there's no contract. It's just a, just on a hourly basis as requested. So there's no, there's, it's really just at the discretion of the city administration. If there are questions that it seems like you might be helpful to provide input on.
Is that any, any other follow-ups on that? Councilmember Nadolski?
Nope, they'll do it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember White?
Yeah, this is just a, I don't, just a random question, but we have a lot of properties that we have changed zoning for or have done a conditional overlay and the developer hasn't started their project yet. Do we? Or they've started a little bit and then have quit. Do we require a bond or anything from them? Or do we hold back money from? Put it in escrow or anything? To make sure that they get done, to make sure that they actually do the project.
I'll probably have to get back to you on that. Just is there any specific project that you're thinking about?
One on like 30th and Washington, maybe?
Okay, so if there's just the, as far as there's a, a bond or some required.
I don't know. I just don't know if we ever asked them to do any escrow or anything. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get back to you.
We changed the zoning on that a while back. Or, or the, the, I'll bring up the Doug Stevens question.
I'll bring up the Doug Stevens question, the Fred Meyer building. Do we ever ask for that kind of a? I, I just curious, it's more of a curious.
Okay, I'll get some information back to you on that. I, I know for certain projects, we do have escrow for landscaping, other kinds of improvements like that. But I'll, I'll, I'll take a look at those particular.
It's not an emergency to get back, I'd like to get.
There are some though, that if they like a conditional overlay. If they get the overlay and then don't perform, then it does revert after a year, I think it is. And. And then projects don't invest until they get a permit anyway, do they?
Yeah, I think those, those conditional overlay development agreements are written with the reversionary clause. I don't. I can't think of a time when we've ever actually gone back on that and reverted things back to the way it was before. But I'd have to check. Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Councilmember Lopez?
I just had some, I actually had some follow-up questions on previous. So I was wondering, who, who, who made, who hired Mark Johnson for to be a consultant?
Um, I, I think it was, I, I was involved in that decision-making. It was just an idea that there might be some. Information that he had or. Questions that might come up and, and so.
So was you, or you and the mayor?
Yeah, I think me and the mayor.
You and the mayor?
The mayor and I made that, made that decision, yeah.
Okay, okay. How many other part-time consultants do we have like, like Mark?
I'm, I'm not sure exactly how many other we have, but I know we, we have had from time to time, like. I think. Ward Ogden, for example, might have been somebody that we, you know, he, he, he was here for thirty years and worked in the. Community development area, and sometimes people just have knowledge, so I can get some information on that, but I don't know exactly.
And where, where is the, where is the money to pay him coming from? From what budget?
It's coming from, departments have part-time budgets. And so there, there is a discretion to hire individuals part-time in, in the budgets already.
So what, what department is this coming from?
So I, that's a good question. It might be coming from. Some of it, when I was a management services director, there's a part-time budget in that, in that department. This one might be coming from the mayor's. The mayor's office budget, but I'll, I could, I don't know for sure which budget it's coming out of.
Okay. Could, could you, could you please?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, so much for being ready to.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
Spring in there and answer some questions on the fly like that. We had so, a few minutes, but we're at the four thirty mark. And so. I guess we need to end the work session. And I don't know, we just end it, right? We're done? And then wait for Jason to let it give us the go-ahead on when we can get started, so thank you.
Sounds good, thank you.
We're not closing until after the approval of minutes, yeah? Thanks, Glenn. Okay. I don't have a gavel. Boom, boom, alright. Welcome to the four thirty PM redevelopment agency meeting. Let the record reflect that all council members are present. And we are joined online by councilmember Nadolski and Chair Chaburka. Would you like to say hello?
Hello.
Hello, thanks again for facilitating, Ken.
Thank you. Okay. First item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. Councilmember higher.
Yes, I have read those. It was a very short one. I was pleased at this one, and they're accurate.
Okay, councilmember or board member Nadolski? You gotta get the board member, councilmember. Board member Nadolski.
They're good.
Okay, thank you. Board member White?
Uh, yes, I reviewed them and they are accurate.
And board member Lopez stepped out for a second. Board member Blair?
Yes, I reviewed those and found them to be accurate.
Okay. Maybe use the bathroom, okay? Board member. Hire is pulling them up to see what.
See, that was what dates?
So this would be for the special session of November first. Twenty twenty-two. And as he's looking at those, I'll just, I didn't read the meeting, so, so the, the meetings that we've approving minutes on, special meeting of October eleventh, twenty twenty-two. The close session of October eleventh, twenty twenty-two. The regular meeting, regular meetings of October eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Special session of December sixth, twenty twenty-two, and. Board member higher is reviewing the November first, twenty twenty-two minutes. I don't see the January tenth on here. Is that under the council?
It's not on this.
That's on the council, special city council later.
It's on there.
Oh, is it?
It's on there.
Oh, and the January, no, thank you, sorry, and the January tenth, twenty twenty-three from board member White, thank you.
We could pull those off and just add them to another later meeting if you want.
Okay. Okay, let's go ahead and pull those off and then.
I didn't get there.
Okay. All right, so we'll, we will, do we need to make a motion for that or just to, to pull that off?
I think it's okay.
Okay, so we'll just take a motion to approve the minutes.
I would make a motion that we approve the. Those minutes and with, with the removal of the special session of November first, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a, a motion to approve the minutes by board member Blair with a second of board member higher. This is a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that passes. All right, and our next item is to consider joining into a closed session.
Jared, make a motion that we adjourn into a closed session for one of the items listed in the agenda. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by board member higher to adjourn into a closed session with a second by board member Blair. All in, this is a voice vote, all in favor. Oh, this is a roll call vote, thank you.
Board member Blair?
Aye.
Board member higher?
Aye.
Board member Lopez? Board member Nadolski?
Aye.
Board member White?
Aye.
Chair Chaburka?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ritchie?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. We will now be going into it. Now, if you have joined, so this is, if you've joined to the Zoom meeting, you'll need to voluntarily remove yourself from the meeting. Otherwise, you will not be able to join back in. Is that correct, Brandon? So please, at this time, just excuse yourself. And we will take a moment to set up for our closed session. And then we'll be back again at six PM for the special city council meeting.
All right.